Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Mayor Commission Work Session on February 1st, 2021, and the time is 10:02. Item one on the agenda is proposed downtown workforce housing incentives. Mr. Green, do you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Good morning. We're excited to be bringing this discussion before you. What we'd like to do this morning is talk a little bit about how we regulate development in our downtown, talk a little bit about the Transfer of Development Rights Program and how that works, talk about our downtown incentives and how we-
Excuse me, Mr. Green. IT or somebody, my screen is not working here. I see everyone else's is. Maybe if I turn it on. If I can get somebody here, because I... Oh, okay, just had to be turned on. Okay. Proceed. All right. I don't normally have to turn it on, you know. I'm glad I discovered the problem. Yes.
Talk about some of our major downtown incentive areas, then I'll talk briefly about our downtown Class A office market and our hotel market. We'll discuss what is the need downtown with regard to incentives, and then at that point, I'll turn it over to Anna Aponte, our City Urban Designer, to talk about our workforce housing incentive, and then certainly we'll open it up to any questions and feedback. I will let the Mayor and Commission know that we have had discussions with Jason Larson, the developer of Flagler Station, a workforce housing project, as well as Jack Weir. So, a lot of the concepts you see today, we've bounced these ideas off of them, and we will continue those discussions in the future. Also, I'd like to thank Anna Aponte of my staff, Jeremy Hagler, who's in the back in Housing. They provided assistance and a lot of number crunching that you'll see later in the presentation. So, I'm going to give you a 30,000-foot view of our transportation concurrency exception area and how that works. You've seen this before, but in essence, based on agreement we have with the State Department of Economic Opportunity, as well as Palm Beach County, we are permitted in our downtown to build 6,934 units, residential units, if and only if, I'm sorry, 15 million square feet, if and only if we build 6,934 units. So, the two are tied together. We must maintain the balance of residential to non-residential. We can exceed the residential on the left, but we cannot do 15 million square feet unless we attain that ratio of 0.46, which is the ratio of residential to 1,000 square feet of non-residential. The good news is, on the residential side, we have already constructed downtown 7,473 units, so we're well over that number. We're allowed to exceed the residential. We cannot exceed the non-residential, and then we have nearly 1,600 units in the mix right now. Those that are identified in green, if you can see the green, the 303 Banyan, 445 De Tura, 695 South Olive, and Flagler Station are already under construction, and we expect the Macy's, the Grand, and Lofton Place Phase Two just submitted, those will be coming online. When you add those all together, that's an additional 1,600, so we'll be more than 2,100 units above what is required. On the non-residential side, we've only built 10 million square feet to date, so we have room to build another 5 million square feet. And again, the ratio of 0.46 won't be an issue because we're already at 0.74, so even if we don't build another residential unit, we can still build that additional 5 million square feet. Now, we have a, the city cannot, again-
Excuse me, Mr. Green. We have a question from Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Just before you go off this, do you mind just reminding us again about the transportation concurrency policy?
Yes, it was a study that was done way back in the, in the mid-'90s, so in 1997, the county, the state, and the city agreed that there was a finite amount of development in our downtown. We were going to allow congestion on certain roadways, provided that there was a proper mix of residential to non-residential. So, when we first started the program, that ratio of residential to non-residential was 0.33, because we had very little residential downtown. We had to increase that number typically by .03 every year until about, I think it was 2010, we plateaued at 0.46, and then we had to retain that ratio on an ongoing basis. The thought being is that we didn't want, if you look back at West Palm Beach Downtown, West Palm Beach 20, 25 years ago, nobody lived downtown. It was a place where people commuted into work, 5 o'clock, it was a ghost town, everybody left, and that's what they didn't want. So, they were encouraging the city to build residential, so we had people living and working in the same locale, and the thought was that the more residential units you have downtown, the more people are walking to work, or hopping on a trolley, or biking, et cetera. So, that was the goal that was defined by the state and the county and the city, to maintain that ratio. What we've witnessed, obviously, as everyone knows, is a resurgence of residential, so now we have more, which, again, we're not penalized for having more, but in order to achieve that 15 million, they said you had to have that minimum of 6,900 residential.
Follow-up?
Thank you. Just, so, the idea is that with more residential, that would actually either maintain or decrease the amount of traffic that would be in the area.
That is the thought, correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, at some point in the future, and I don't think it's going to happen immediately, but at some point in the future, we're going to probably have to revisit this whole concept of the TCA once we get closer to the 15 million, and certainly, staff is starting to think about that. We don't want to wait until we hit 15 million, but certainly with roadway improvements, again, if we're successful in getting the Fern Street extension, that's going to help, that would allow that number to go up as well. So, those are things we'll have to look at. So, again, in our downtown, we cannot build more than the 15 million square feet in the area outlined in red, and that, again, was what was approved by the state and Palm Beach County. All additional development can be incentivized through the sending of TDRs, so in this Figure 4-35 of our downtown master plan, we can mix and match square footage throughout the downtown, so it can be moved from one place to the other. It just cannot exceed that total anywhere within that, that red boundary, if you will. The value of TDRs today on the private market ranges between $12 and $15 a square foot. We generally use $13.5 a square foot when we run our analysis. And again, Gateway Park at the very southwest corner of the downtown, right here, by the Marriott, that has been our sending source of about a million square feet of TDRs to projects throughout the city, and we are nearing the end of the available TDRs we have now, so that's something certainly we're looking at. After that, when we completely exhaust our TDRs, whether it's this site or other potential sites we may have, then everyone's going to have to go to the private market to get those TDRs.
Mr. Green, before you move off of TDRs, we are having discussions about other possible sources of sending sites?
Yes, we are, Mr. Mayor. We've had discussions with the city attorney about the Seaboard Station for one. We're looking at our obligations to Transit Village, and Mr. Massinoff with that deal. We have a little bit of square footage available at Jose Marti Park, so that'll be a separate presentation at some point. We'll bring that back to the Commission for discussion and see what, what you want to do.
Thank you.
So, let me give a quick summary of some of the major, what we call the major downtown incentive areas we have. So, certainly, our Quadro business district, which is behind the Brightline Station. We have incentives in place for residential. The Parkline Beaches took advantage of that incentive. We have Class A office. If a developer builds more than 200,000 square feet, they're provided additional height and TDRs, and then we also have a full-service hotel of 200 or more full-service hotel rooms. We have an incentive for the Quadro Garden District. This is the one that Mr. Green took advantage of. We have incentives there for both Class A office and full-service hotel to allow him to go from 10 stories to 30 stories. We have the Okeechobee Business District, probably the most recent incentive that we implemented along the Okeechobee Corridor, providing an incentive for Class A office of 200,000 or more square feet of Class A office. And then we had one in the Clematis Waterfront District for boutique hotels. That expired on June 15th, 2015. Under that incentive, Rob Samuels received approval for a 96-room hotel right next door to us in City Hall. That, of course, was never built. Staff would recommend that we should delete that, because it's no longer in place, and it, again, it expired back in 2015. So, the way the special incentive works, and again, I'll use the Quadro Garden District because it's probably the most relevant at this point, but this is the district that Mr. Green asked us to implement. The zoning code changes back in 2015. So, how this work, it works is there is a requirement. In this case, again, 200,000 square feet of Class A office must be built, a full-service hotel of 200 or plus rooms. The current code allows for a floor area ratio, and that is simply the building square footage divided by your land area, of 2.75, and with the incentive, a developer is allowed to increase his floor area ratio to 5.5. So, under the current code, in the Quadro Garden District, you can build 10 stories or 155 feet. If you build either office or hotel, the incentive allows you to go up to 25 stories, in this case, 380 feet. If you build both office and hotel, that allows you to go to 30 stories or 455 feet. So, without those two uses, you are limited to the 10 stories and the 2.75 FAR. So, back in 2015, we amended the code to provide this incentive, and that's really how all the incentives work, that you have a certain requirement that we're seeking in a particular district. If you provide that incentive or meet that incentive, you get more FAR and more height. So, looking at our Class A office market, historically, we've had four buildings in three projects encompassing nearly a million square feet. City Place was the last Class A office building built in 2008, so for more than a decade, we had no Class A office downtown. And what we found is that we were losing a lot of Class A office tenants to other cities, whether it be Boca, whether it be Miami, because we just didn't have the availability. And as the market got better downtown, we were seeing vacancy rates in, in projects like Phillips Point and Esperante of 4% and 5%. So, that's why we implemented the incentive in an effort to try to lure Class A office development and users into the downtown. Subsequent to some of these developers, we now have 360 Rosemary nearing completion. That'll be done in the fall. We have One Flagler, the related project on Okeechobee and Flagler was approved by the Downtown Action Committee. They're moving forward. And then Charles Cohen's West Point, West Palm Point Project on the 10 site just went through our Plans and Plats Review Committee about three weeks ago, so that's moving forward as well. We'll see what Mr. Green decides to do on One West Palm, but presuming he moves forward with a Class A office development, we will, in essence, double the amount of square footage we have for Class A office from what we had prior to any of these four projects beginning.
Mr. Green, before you move off there, I see you have a note, "Construction to Resume." Have you had any conversations with Jeff Green as to timing of resumption of construction?
So, Mr. Mayor, we've had discussions with his, his architectural firm, Architectonica. They have submitted to us conceptual drawings of what they would like to do, and in essence, what they're doing is they're taking a lot of the upper-floor plates, dividing them into four quadrants, to have the flexibility of e-developing as office or converting them to residential with a new balcony that they're showing. They have not formally submitted anything to us yet. I think they're waiting to see what comes out of this discussion, but we hope, we're hopeful that they will resume fairly soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Even if, if Mr. Green doesn't move forward on One West Palm, we still would have about 844,000 square feet of Class A office, presuming the other three move forward, which, again, is significant, will last us a, a pretty long time. On the hotel front, we've got the Ben as part of the Flagler Banyan Square that just opened. The Canopy opened a few months ago, and then, of course, West Palm, One West Palm has a hotel component there. Those three projects have a total of 547 rooms. We've been working with the Cosmopolitan, who has an approval. They have not moved forward yet, but their concept plan shows 204 hotel rooms. And then, of course, Gary Kulick, as part of his Marriott Residence Inn, always envisioned a second phase on the other side of the alley, so we've been in discussion with him, and we hope and expect that he may be submitting sometime soon to do a second hotel called the AC Marriott. So, again, if both of these are added to the, the potential three, then you're looking at a total of 883 hotel rooms. So, again, a tremendous amount of development, and we continue to see-
Now, let, before you go off of there, because you hear various stories from, from Mr. Green, One West Palm developer. So, is he doing the hotel now? Because at one point, he was saying he couldn't find a flag and-
The latest discussion was, and I could be wrong, Mr. Mayor, but the latest discussion, I thought he was going to move forward with a hotel. The office, I think, was a little bit more in flux, and again, to get from the 10 to the 25, he has to do either office or hotel, and then, again, to get from the 25 to the 30, he has to do both. What we're proposing would be a third alternative that he could incorporate, and we'll get into that in more discussion.
But the latest you heard is he is proceeding with the hotel?
That was my understanding.
Okay.
But I could be corrected. So, with regard to the incentive, so, we will eventually come back to the City Commission with amendments to our, our downtown master plan and our zoning code. So, these are some of the concepts that we would like to incorporate in those amendments. So, with regard to the Class A office incentive that we have in place now, we certainly would like to keep them in the Quadro Business District. This is the property on either side of Clematis Street, behind the All-Aboard Brightline Station. We think that's a perfect location for Class A office, so no harm in leaving it in there. We would like to leave it in there, although the market is probably not needed now. Again, we're always looking 20 and 30 years out for the city. Certainly, the Okeechobee Business District, we would like to retain that as well. With regard to the full-service hotel incentive, we would, again, like to keep that in the Quadro, remove it from, sorry, from the Quadro Garden District, which is the area in green here, but keep it in the Quadro Business District, the same two areas where we're proposing to keep the Quadro Business District. We would like to consider a new boutique hotel incentive in the Quadro Business District. This is a privately initiated amendment. We, we're expecting an application next week, so we'll know more about the actual plan for this boutique hotel, but that would happen within, again, the Quadro Business District. We would like to remove the residential incentive in the Quadro Business District. This is the one that the Brightline took advantage of. Given the number of units we have, we don't think there's really a need for a residential incentive anymore, so we would propose to remove that. We'll make some minor tweaks to the sending and receiving sites in the downtown master plan. The next presentation, you'll hear on the Nora District, certainly, we would like to encourage that TDRs be allowed to move into that area, so we'll talk about that in the next presentation. And then, lastly, as we've touched upon before, we'd like to introduce a new workforce housing incentive. And at this point, this is where I turn it over to Anna.
Thank you, Rick. Yes, so, as Rick was, Mr. Green was explaining, the downtown basically has used the sending and receiving sites, or the receiving sites for TDRs as a source, to allow additional development capacity in those areas or those sites where additional development capacity is appropriate. So, what we're suggesting with affordable housing, with the workforce housing incentive, is to use the same mechanism and allow developers to use the incentive for the workforce housing if their sites basically are eligible for receiving sites for TDRs. So, that will be any of the sites that are color on the map that are currently identified, and we'll be working on additional sites that we may identify as additional development capacity can be observed, like, like the next presentation that we're doing is for the Nora District on the north side of the downtown. That is an area where some portions of that could receive additional development capacity, and that's why the TDR map will have to be modified for that. So, it will be, the concept, it's, intends that it will be applicable to basically anyone that desires to do residential projects in the downtown. If the site is designated as a TDR receiving site, and they decide to do residential, they could increase the development capacity, and with certain conditions. So, this is an example that we did. So, the base capacity for a particular site that is a TDR receiving site is a 10 stories and a 2.75 FAR. If the developer decides to do a residential project, they could then apply an additional bonus for development capacity, and let's say, in this case, increase their height to 12 stories, so two additional stories, and increase the development capacity 1.25 additional FAR. So, if they decide to do this and increase their development capacity to utilize this incentive, they will have to, one, acquire the TDRs in the private market, and then to dedicate 33% of the incentive area for workforce housing units. So, the concept is, again, if you desire to increase your development capacity above what you are allowed by right, the, kind of the compensation or the benefit for the city is that you will provide workforce housing units in the downtown. The intent is that the market, the target is for families with income between 60 and 100% of the area median income, and then, these workforce housing units will be restricted something between 15 and 20 years. We're kind of discussing the details. Who is benefiting from this? So, our analysis, and we work with the Housing and Economic Department on these numbers, is the intent is to basically benefit families with income up to $79,100. That is the 100% of the AMI, based on the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. If you look at the numbers, something between $47,460 and $79,100 is the income for families between 60 and 100% of the AMI. So, who are these? These are basically teachers, public workers, young professionals. We even went and looked at the numbers in the city employee database, and approximately 70% of the city employees are basically below that 100% of the AMI. So, that is the target of this incentive, produce residential units for that group of, of workers that are employed in the downtown, and they could not afford to rent a unit in any of the, of the projects downtown. The next question, how much does it mean? How much they can pay a family? So, we look again, the numbers from the Florida Housing Corporation, and they have a specific table that is published every year that determines what is the maximum rent level of each of these target income levels in, according with a unit type. So, if we look at the 60% of the AMI, they have, the columns indicate if it is a studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and so on. So, if you look at 60% of the AMI, a family with a 16% of the AMI will be able to pay a rent that is basically $922 for a studio in this area. Up to, if we go to the 100% of the AMI, the price will be $1,538. So, this table is established by the Florida Housing Corporation, so we will use, use this information to say, we want these units to be within these targets, so be rented at these prices, so these families could afford them. And then, the next question is, what is the market rate of units downtown, right? So, we went and did just a survey of a website, the websites for these projects that all rental manage communities, so they have availability on the internet, and they have the, the information. So, based on the numbers that we gathered just last week of what is the price of the units being rented in the downtown, these are the numbers that we came up. So, it's the oversea at Banyan, the Parkline, that is the 25-story building next to the train station, the Broadstone City Center, that is on De Tura, and Quadro, that is now called Soleil, the Alexander, that is called Avalon now, and Lofton Place. Those are the biggest residential projects downtown that are, like, managed by a company, so we could find the information readily available for us. So, based on those numbers, the average market rate unit for rental comes up to these prices. So, $1,686 would be for the studio. When you compare that to the prices that we have identified under their target, so the 60% of the AMI is $922, the 100% of the AMI, it would be $1,538. So, this is the lowest. The higher, the larger the unit, the bigger the difference between the market rate and the, kind of the restricted income. So, that's why we would like to propose this incentive, because definitely, families with income between 60 and 100% of the AMI could not afford to rent one of these units in downtown. Just as an example, so, we took the 550 Banyan Boulevard, that is the vacant side on the corner of Rosemary and Banyan, on the south side. So, that side is 54,885 square feet. It has, by right, an FAR of 2.75 that will allow the developer to build 150,934 square feet of development. If this developer decides to utilize the incentive that is already assigned to this site, or a modified incentive that gives more, an additional 1.25 FAR could be given to the site. That means an additional 68,606 square feet that could be brink or brought to the site to increase their development capacity. So, they could have 219,540 square feet of development with this incentive. From that, if their requirement will be 33% of the 68,000, just the government is based on the incentive only, we're not targeting the overall capacity or the base, it's just the incentive, they will have to provide 22,640 square feet on units dedicated for families with income between 60 and 80%. 60 and, 100%, yes. So, we, just running the quick numbers, if we assume the unit is 1,000 square feet, that this is a rough number that is used, the units are usually smaller, but this accounts for 20% of the area dedicated for corridors and common areas and all that. So, turns out around 800 square feet, but we don't 1,000 because it's easier. So, the total number of units in this project is 219, what they propose, and then from those 23 units will be dedicated for the workforce housing program. I run the numbers with a project that was just recently approved. This is the 303 Banyan that is going to be built, and they already submit permits for the parking lot of the Wells Fargo Building on the corner of Banyan and Rosemary, and Dixie. So, just use the numbers of these projects. So, the site is 72,372 square feet. By right, they are allowed to do 199,023 square feet. The incentive on that side right now, it's one point of FAR, so they are allowed to do an additional 72,372 square feet of development capacity with a total development of around 270, 271,000 square feet. 223 units were proposed on that project, so if the workforce housing incentive would have been applied to this project, they would have been required to do 33% of the incentive for workforce housing. That means 23,882 square feet that would have been dedicated for workforce housing units. That means around 24 units if this project would have been done that way. Now, I'm going to turn to Mr. Green to explain a little bit the other options.
So, with this, we wanted to identify alternative options, knowing that everybody, every developer did not want to provide that workforce housing in their respective project. So, really, there are three options that a developer could pursue. Firstly, and the one that we would prefer to see, obviously, would be to provide the workforce units within the building itself. If they did not, second option would be to provide the required workforce housing units in another location. So, what staff discussed, and again, certainly, we'd like to have this discussion with the Mayor and Commission, is we have a couple options. One, we could limit where that replacement workforce housing is provided, so it could either be downtown, or it could be citywide. And then, if it's citywide, you could do one of two options. You can do it anywhere in the city, or we could target specific neighborhoods. And then, the third option would be a pay-in lieu of, that provides basically a funding source for the city, so we could then use that workforce housing dollars and either help other projects that are coming in along that same line. So, these are one of the open questions, again, certainly, we would like to discuss with the Commission. So, using the same example that Anna provided earlier with the 550 Banyan, this is the vacant lot next to the police station, again, the first option is if they provide it in the project, they could do that. That would be about 10.3% of the total square footage, based on, based on the analysis. They could provide it elsewhere, or, thirdly, they could have a buyout of the obligation, again, one-third of the incentive, and then, there's a couple ways we can handle this, and this is what we were speaking to a couple of the developers that I referenced earlier. You could tie it to a building cost per permit of the building cost for the project, or, like they do in Palm Beach County, Delray Beach, and others, we could just have a flat fee per unit. In, in the case of Palm Beach County, they use $75,000. So, if we, if we tie it to a building permit, our, the building division has a building valuation table that we use, that's published by the International Code Council, again, for multifamily residential, that varies based on the type of construction, between $114, $169. Generally, we're using the type 2B. Construction is what most projects come in with. This table gets updated twice a year, in August and February. This is the most recent table. So, again, we could do that. I think the easier way would be just to have a flat fee, so certainly, we can work towards calculating what that might be, so it's easier for a developer, and again, in that case, we're not trying to identify exactly what the cost per square foot is based on the type of construction. So, in short, I know that's a lot to throw at you, but that concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions or have any discussion you might have.
Thank you for that presentation from you and Anna. Quick question on the buyout. So, if we come up with a flat fee, whatever that is, one of the concerns, criticisms I've heard about having a buyout is that we never end up with construction of workforce housing. So, this is probably not a question you can answer today, but I'd like to see some assurance, and I don't know how, but, but, you know, that once we do get this bucket of money, assuming that many developers opt for just buying it out, that we have some kind of- that many developers opt for just buying it out, that we have some kind of strategy for getting workforce housing constructed, particularly in our downtown area, so.
And Mr. Mayor, one option is that we could use that money to offset the TDR cost. Again, we're shortly going to run out, even if we look at the few remaining sites that we may be able to convert into TDRs. But again, at a cost of $12 to $15 a square foot, if a developer wants to utilize the incentive, and then maybe they can't afford to purchase those TDRs in the private market, we could maybe dip into this fund if we had monies available, pay that for a developer, and do something in that regard. But we'll come back with several options that we all can consider.
Okay. Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Green, for the presentation. Certainly, I know, sitting on the Recommendation Committee with Housing, to have affordable housing recommendations of the state, the number of these we've discussed about how we can help to continue to create affordable housing. As it pertains to the options, your one, two, and three options on your previous slide, one of the things that I have been curious about is that that third buyout option, in ways of finding a mechanism to use funds and affordable housing development being created within the downtown to benefit the entire city. And so in looking at a buyout option that would create a fund, would there be an opportunity to create, you know, a housing advisory board that would be able to create home ownership opportunities in the housing stock that we already have? One of the issues that we have throughout the north end are some zombie properties, where they are estates of someone who, you know, family members no longer live here, and they become rundown, dilapidated, and sometimes end up in foreclosure and back into the hands of the city. So is there a way for us to take those funds and develop a home ownership opportunity? I'm looking at what's affordable, and granted, you're taking your numbers from the state, it's not something that the city is developing themselves, but some of the numbers, even at 100% AMI of what is deemed affordable, is not affordable for a family's budget. So if there's a way that we can kind of take a look at a program that would allow us to take our existing housing stock and create an ownership opportunity, then I think some of the numbers that we look at become more palatable for a household that's building equity. So I guess the question in that is, is there a viable program that we can look at? Is that something that we've considered throughout the city, or is there a way forward with that plan?
Certainly, I think Jennifer wants to comment, but certainly, I think that's something we can do. I mean, I think as long as there's a relation between the money collected and how it's expended, as long as there's that relation, I think that's fine. I mean, years ago, when we were building the western communities, Riverwalk, Oakton, and Banyan, there was a linkage fee, where every unit that was built, we assessed a $750 fee. Part of that went to building a new fire station out there, $250 of that went to an affordable housing program that had to be spent east of I-95, and we collected over a million dollars. So that linkage could be provided, as long as we, again, tied it for the same type of use, and the money's not being used elsewhere. I think certainly, we can come up with a program.
Mayor, Commissioners, Jennifer Ferrell, Housing and Community Development. We currently have a housing trust fund, Commissioner, and in that housing trust fund, we can utilize it, you know, and even that there was a buyout option, the funds could be deposited into that account. We currently have a first-time homebuyers program, as you know, where we provide down payment and closing cost assistance to individuals who'd like to become first-time homebuyers. We have other initiatives, for example, with RISE, a very similar initiative, where we've assisted individuals that live in the RISE area to purchase housing within the RISE area. And we have other strategies that we've utilized in the past, an acquisition rehab, which is to acquire some of these homes that have gone under foreclosure, you rehab them, and then you put them out in the market and allow an individual who meets specific income criteria to purchase the property. So absolutely, we can do that, and that buyout option would obviously be used towards either the development or preservation of housing. So yes, to answer your question.
Thank you.
And I think as we look at that, we have to consider the value of having affordable housing in the downtown area, because we are looking to hopefully get people who work downtown and, you know, minimize traffic. And there's a benefit, I believe, to having affordable units in the downtown area, so we can encourage people to live and work in the same area. So let's keep that priority in mind as well.
Absolutely. Mayor, if I may add, one of the things when we were discussing the buyout option and thinking, well, can you do it offsite, can you do it elsewhere? So kind of the, you know, the discussion that we were having was, can a developer come in and decide that they'd like to go, let's say, to somewhere in the north end to develop affordable housing or workforce housing? And we were going, you know, we were thinking that we want to have it in the downtown because it is one of the high-cost areas of our city. There's already a high concentration of low-income housing in the north end of our city, so we really wanted to keep it within the downtown, and that's why we were kind of moving, trying to move forward with that recommendation, because that's where the need is. It's in our downtown, it's a high-cost area, and that's where there's a lot of development and potential to really get the units that we'd need.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, and that was what my question was about. Could you go back to that slide that shows the three different? Oh, you're on it, great. And so are you asking for our suggestions or our input based on two, item two, option one and option two?
Correct. The staff, as Jennifer just mentioned, was leaning towards requiring, as the mayor mentioned, solely to downtown. So if you were taking advantage of the incentive for downtown development, the workforce housing had to be provided downtown.
And would we offer all three of these options? Should that be the well of this commission?
That is the goal, that a developer could utilize any one of these three options, yes.
And so if for option, for item number two, we restricted it to just the downtown area, they would still have the option number three, which then the city would utilize those funds within our housing trust fund to determine where might be the most appropriate place for that development? That is correct. Okay.
And I think, Commissioner, we could be flexible enough that a developer could utilize all three options on a project. Do some of it, if he fell short of what the requirement was, he could buy out the remainder or provide it elsewhere in the downtown. But again, we'd like to create this or set this up with as much flexibility as possible. We wouldn't preclude anybody from using a combination of the three options.
Interesting. And I have another question about the workforce housing incentive. I think it's a few slides before this, when you talk about it's two stories plus another 1.25 in FAR. My question is, is, are they able to receive this incentive in multiples, or it's one incentive? This is the one incentive, it's two stories, and that's it?
Yes, it would be one incentive for a project. Go ahead.
Commissioner, but it depends on the area, it will be different. I mean, I just put an example of a two-story, maybe another examples where the incentive is five stories, and the additional bonus is two FAR instead of 1.25. It all depends where the site is located and how additional development capacity fits from the urban design principles, like how high the building could be in relationship with the street width and all that, the location.
I see.
So that's why it's different. When you go to, like this map, each of the colors represents a different type of incentive. Some sites have more incentive, other ones have less. So that's why the bonus is, is that 33% is based only on the incentive and not the overall project.
Okay, so they can only use this incentive once, but they can add multipliers of other incentives that might be in that area?
It's just one incentive, and this is the one that they can do.
I'm sorry, what?
This is only one. I mean, it's only this what they can do. So that means that if a developer wants to do residential in the downtown, and they want to increase their development capacity above what they are allowed by right, they have to use this incentive.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, so let's, can you do a back-of-the-invelope calculation for the Jeff Green project, one West Palm, for example? If he did not want to do the Class A office space, but wanted to use this incentive for, to give him the extra height that he's looking for, how many units or what kind of money would he need to contribute to a fund?
So we're having, we're having an internal discussion, Anna and I, that's the best way to do it, because this one's a little bit unique, Mayor, in the sense that there's a two-pronged incentive that he's utilizing here, as highlighted in the green. So the question is, he can go from 10 to 25 if he does office or hotel. Let's say hypothetically, he's going to move forward with a hotel. Then the question is, to get from the 26th floor to the 30th, is the incentive just that five-story height, or is it, or does the one-third incentive, it apply to anything above 10 stories? Because the incentive is from, to go from 10 to 30. I think we should look at the five-story increment. So again, it's based on square footage. I know we ran some numbers at approximately 834,000 is the whole project. So figure one tower, let's round off to 400, divide that by 30, I'm doing this math standing up, then it's about 13,000 a floor times five, so it'd be about 65,000 if I did my math right for the five floors. And then a third of that, so roughly 20,000, that we'd have to calculate how many units he could build and apply, if we're going to go with a per-unit cost. Again, we haven't determined that yet, and again, we wanted to get that feedback from the commission. But we certainly can run that.
But there is a way that he could do.
There is a way, yes.
I think Commissioner Nering had a question.
I did, thanks. So thanks for your presentation. Could you go back to the options, slide, I think it's towards the end, the different options for the developers? And I think some of this conversation has been captured, but I think it's important that as best we can, that we are bullish when it comes to focusing on the downtown with affordable housing. I mean, my concern with working with developers or allowing developers to target neighborhoods is this proliferation of workforce housing outside of the downtown that ultimately, obviously, we'd like that for, you know, our city in general, but I think for various reasons and some that were pointed out earlier in terms of transportation and other things, it's really prudent to focus on the downtown. Also, and I realize we are not New York, so this is not apples-to-apples, but I was thinking about the Hudson Yard project, huge, huge project, and they took the approach of 50 to 60% AMI with that project, and again, I think about 110 units, again, which is a de minimis amount compared to the overall units. My point is, I'm sure if it were just left to the powers that be, perhaps, maybe that wouldn't have been a part of it, I don't know, and I realize that folks are here locally that were a part of that project. The point I'm trying to make is, whatever we can do as a commission to steward workforce housing in the downtown makes a lot of sense. The other question I had, that was just a comment, the question I do have is, we had, it was stated that 70% of city staff are under 100% or below 100% AMI. I'm curious, do we have that same percentage for city staff? Just curious about this, who are under the 60%? Because I think that is a more telling number, that 100%. I mean, and I think Commissioner Shoff brought this up, or one of the commissioners, I mean, that's...
Commissioner, I think we can provide that, because we reached out to HR, and then we provided certain brackets as to how many are under this percentage, how many are under that. So I don't recall, but I believe we have it.
Okay. If you do, because I think that, again, that's just a microcosm of what we're talking about, but I think that number, because sometimes, you know, at least as I look at these things, the 100% it sounds good, but the reality is, the majority and the bulk of the numbers is really around that, a different percentage, not the 100% of the AMI, the 60%. So just curious about that.
Mr. Fana, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, Mayor, Commissioners, Ramondo Fana, Assistant City Administrator. Just Commissioner Nering, just to that point, the best mechanism that exists currently for creating 60% and below AMI units is the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. We just gotten, we just did a groundbreaking on Banyan Station, which that was approved through that, and actually, we did provide some incentive through our housing trust fund for that project. Also, Vernia Place, which was completed about five years ago, six years ago, for senior housing, that was also a low-income housing tax credit. So under that program, there is a requirement, in order to be competitive, that the city provide a, some matching funds for the tax credit program, it's generally around $700,000 to a million dollars. And so that is where I think we can, we can really bring those units online, is partnering with low-income housing tax credit providers and providing that, those matching funds so that they can be competitive when they apply for the tax credit program through the state. It's actually a U.S. Treasury program, but it's, the state is when it administers it. And there'll be other opportunities, I think, in the future in downtown to be able to do that, but getting that money into the trust fund is an important component of that, because we have to be able to provide those matching funds. And we've actually depleted the trust fund mostly because we provided a significant incentive to the Grand Project, which is a workforce housing project through those funds, and some other projects as well, like Alice Moore Apartments and others. So it's a, it's a combination of both the Low Income Housing Tax Credit and our housing trust fund.
And Commissioner, if I may, I didn't want to get into the weeds in today's presentation, but part of what we, we were working on, particularly with Jeremy and HCD, is that we've developed a spreadsheet that the lower, or the more housing that's provided with a lesser percentage of AMI, you're going to get more credit. So we have multipliers that we have in place. So this is a kind of a standard template that we worked out. So as we bring this through the process, and you see this later in the summer, we'll sit down with a developer, this looks like this might have been the Jeff Green case. But what will happen is, in this case, the developer chose, you know, a third of the workforce units being 60%, a third, 80, a third, 100, then they can run through this spreadsheet that Jeremy created and figure out what the best mix might be. The more he does on the lesser number, the more credit he gets early on. So we didn't want to get into the specifics of that today, but, but we've thought about that, and that's kind of how we're working through that concept.
Commissioner, do you have a follow-up?
No, thank you. That's very helpful, though. I appreciate you sharing this.
Commissioner Nering, I just run the numbers for the number of employees, city employees that are below 60%. It's 15% of the employees are below 60% of the AMI, and then 54% that between 60 and 100, 54%.
Very helpful, thank you.
Any other question? Okay, so Mr. Green, what specifically, what guidance are you looking for from us?
If the Commissioners were not adverse to any of the recommendations we had on where we will apply the future workforce, I'm sorry, the future incentives for Class A and office, we'll bring it back in that fashion. What I heard from the commission also is they want us to restrict the workforce housing if it's provided offsite, keep it in the downtown. And again, we'll run this through Planning Board and our Downtown Action Committee, so you'll be seeing it at some point in the future. But we appreciate your input for today's discussion.
Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor, and sorry, Mr. Green, it slipped my mind, because it was earlier in the presentation, we had talked about hotel incentives. If we could just do a check with Discover the Palm Beaches to see if there are any collaborations that make sense to offer incentives for hotel space, you know, as liaison from the city to the TDC, I know there's always a discussion about hotels proximitous to the convention center and attracting business to the convention center based upon that. So if we could just have that conversation to make sure that we're, what we're doing makes sense and fits in with what future partnerships make exist. Thank you.
Commissioners, are you comfortable then with the direction in which we're headed on this? I see heads nodding, so I think we're, okay. So I think there's consensus to proceed, Mr. Green, in keeping in mind the comments of Madam President.
Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Next item, proposed changes to downtown master plan, North Railroad Avenue District, NORAH. Is that what we're calling it, NORAH?
Yes. Again, thank you again, Rick Green, Development Services Director. So we'll do a similar approach here. I'll give a quick introduction, I'll turn it over to Anna Ponte. What I'd like to do here is just talk briefly about the NORAH, where it's located in our downtown, talk about existing zoning and existing conditions that are there today. Then we're going to introduce the concept of the NORAH District and the proposed development that we are working on, discuss some of the proposed zoning changes that we will bring back to you in the future, talk about a timetable for these changes, and then certainly open it up to any questions and feedback you might have. So the NORAH District is located in the northeast corner of the downtown master plan. You see it highlighted in the red area. So to zoom in, it's bounded by Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard to the north, North Dixie Highway to the east, Quadro Boulevard to the south, and Railroad Avenue to the west. It has four sub-districts contained within the NORAH District. It has four sub-districts contained within the NORAH District. So Industrial Chic District 2 is at the very north end between 11th and Palm Beach Lakes, that's Industrial Chic District 2. You have the Industrial Chic District 5, which is along Railroad Avenue and includes the property south of 7, highlighted in the green. And the Industrial Chic District was really supposed to be an alternative neighborhood that was a transition between railroad to the west and then the residential to the east. And it was supposed to be a place where emerging artists would locate, with studios, offices for design professionals, and quite honestly, we just haven't seen that occur. Brelsford Park District R is the residential portion of what will be NORAH, the center of the district, if you will. And then the Brelsford Park District 5 is the corridor along Dixie Highway, and then it wraps around the north side of 7th Street. And again, Brelsford Park was intended to be an infill development, renovation of existing structures, have live-work units, offices, and design art units. This is an aerial of the area today, and as you can see, a lot of vacant property scattered throughout the south, the middle portion and the north end. Again, located just east of the northwest neighborhood, to the northeast, you have Good Sam Hospital, the Hospital for Special Services, Providencia Park to the east, Lofton Place on the southeast corner, and I'll also mention to the commission that Lofton Place Phase 2 has been submitted. And then again, just to the south is the One West Palm Project. So staff had identified that this was an area that we had to make changes to our downtown master plan, given the limited amount of development that we saw taking place there and the incentives in place. Fortunately for the city, we had a developer who had the same idea, and we're now working and partnering with them to make these necessary changes. So staff began working with Ned Grace, I think that's Ned, I can't tell with the mask, but Ned and Joe Furst with NDT Development and Place Projects, and they've retained the firm of Plusivia out of Miami. So we've been working with them over the past few months on these concepts. This is the same group that developed Wynwood in Miami, so they'd like to bring that same concept here to downtown West Palm Beach. Wynwood, as you know, is an entertainment district with artwork, restaurants, breweries, clothing stores, and dance venues. So this is a preliminary rendering of what they are proposing. What's important to note is that the height of the projects start at the base of the Brelsford Park residential area, and then as you move north towards Palm Beach Lakes, you see the heights increase. So you start at a low-scale two and three stories, it transition into a medium area of five to eight stories, and then transitions further as you approach Palm Beach Lakes into a 12 and 15-story product. When you look at the perimeter of the district highlighted in purple, it kind of is anchored by a five-story product, both to the south and to the east along Dixie Highway. So Phase 1 of the NORAH District really has already begun, and you saw that on January 11th of this year when you adopted ordinance 4918-20. And what that ordinance did was allow a little bit more flexibility within this area. It eliminated the requirement for design art-related uses and allowed commercial and office uses along Dixie Highway to continue. It also allowed for off-site accessory parking lots, as you see in the graphic here, the red areas highlighted here. And then again, it removed the density limitations within the ICD 5, which is the perimeter, as well as the ICD 2, which is to the north. And again, most of our, or all of our downtown districts do not have density limitations. This was the only one that had it, so we were removing those as part of that ordinance. Phase 2 involves the amendments to the downtown master plan, so that's what we are working on now with the developers. And that'll address development intensities, height and TDRs. Currently, within the boundaries of NORAH, you could build about 2.2 million square feet on a lot area of just over 1.3 million square feet. And the concept is to create a new district that would allow for redevelopment of these properties with varied uses, increased heights and floor area ratios, again, much different than what you see today. So development could be utilizing the 2.2 million that's in place now. We would allow the uses and square footages to move within the district. Any excess square footage above the base that could be built today would have to be transferred in through the TDR program, which we have to use in our downtown area. So at this point, let me turn it over to Anna, and then I'll finish up at the end.
Yes, I'm just going to go very general over the extent of the changes that will imply this, as Mr. Green mentioned. This is, will basically create a brand-new district for this area and modify probably, I mean, we are still looking into it, but probably will leave the Brelsford Park District in a similar way, maybe transform substantially the industrial shake, maybe that's the one that will be called NORAH, and we'll work with them on that. But definitely will imply comprehensive plan amendment as well as zoning code amendments to just allow all this area to make all these changes that are suggested. Will allow additional development capacity primarily on the north side of the district, like between 10, north of 10, so the 10, 11, 11 and 12, that are the areas that are primarily vacant within the neighborhood. The intention is to still preserve the core of the Brelsford Park neighborhood as a residential has a quite good number of houses that are two-story houses that have multiple units in there, that has a good component of affordable housing units in there, so to promote those ones and keep them in there. And we will have to create a new building requirement districts for all these new types because the current configuration of that area is very low in scale. So we'll have to kind of draft if the heights are appropriate between the, going out from the three that are allowed right now to the eight to the 15, that it initially has been suggested for the properties next to Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, that the width of that street and with the bridge probably could make sense to have buildings at that height. We'll have to work on all that. We already started with staff working with Plusivia and the two developers interested in the project to kind of craft how this, but the interest of the staff will be how to make this compatible with existing structures and the neighborhood and preserve the character of the Brelsford Park and still enhance that. As I say, protect the core of the neighborhood, modify the industrial shake on that. We have been discussing a mechanism to how to, kind of, this area has a lot of square footage on empty land, so how the developer can use the square footage that is currently allowed on the site before they have to bring development capacity through TDRs to the site. So that's a discussion that we are having right now with the developer, if that is a mechanism that we can utilize, and how will that be implemented? As again, they will, definitely will need to bring TDRs to the site because the development capacity that they want to achieve is higher than what is currently permitted in the district. So even if they use initially what is currently on the site, at some point, they will have to bring from other areas of the downtown by TDRs from the private market. There's, have been also discussions of making decide the same changes that we were doing, we were talking in the previous discussion for workforce housing. Staff believes this is a prime location to do the workforce housing, so we are suggesting that this area could be, if they are bringing the TDRs, they will be subject to the same incentives to create the workforce housing. So if that is implemented, that probably will be a discussion in there also. We have been discussing with them also the idea of creating a conservation district for the properties along the railroad tracks, those warehouses, where they are, they have certain value in terms of the character, the industrial character that they have. The proposal is to just modify those buildings and just transform them into the restaurants and the stores, but they will not demolish those structures. So that is a character that staff value and the city values, and it will become kind of a conservation district, so they could use the unused development capacity from those buildings and use it in the other areas on the north side. So that will be kind of the relocation of those same development capacities in there. And then that will be the conservation district, and then use it in the north part of the, on the north portion. These blocks on the north will be the ones that will basically receive the most intense development in there. And then preserve, create a historic district on the center with the Brelsford Park area. So the property owners right now that own those houses, they could sell their TDRs and also benefit from the unused development capacity. That way, we can preserve the character of those structures, keep them at two stories as they are with the multiple units that they have, but they can benefit from the unused development capacity and sell those TDRs to the NORAH or other projects throughout the downtown to kind of rip on that benefit. That kind of is in essence, kind of, the general structure, of course, we are just-
Hold on, Ms. Ponte, I have a question from Madam President.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption there. I just had a question about the historic preservation of the residential neighborhood. This marks a distinct turn from what we've seen on our TDR program previously, which has been very commercially focused. So, you know, I'm hesitant about getting into the sale of TDRs of residential areas, being that we have historic districts throughout the city that would potentially fall under this at some point in the future. I understand right now the discussion is just for this, but I guess I would be interested in hearing more about what the idea is on, A, keeping track of who has sold their development rights from a residential perspective and who has not, because I think it presents some challenges in the future. You know, owner today sells rights, but owner tomorrow doesn't know that and wants to put on a garage and finds out that they can't, it restricts some of their personal property rights. But secondarily, I think it squeezes the development capacity completely, and I'm totally for creating a conservation district of commercial properties to preserve that historic nature, but we already have residential neighborhoods within this city that are preserved as historic neighborhoods because they are part of the historic preservation program and don't receive what would be a financial benefit that this district would. So I guess I bring that up as a point of discussion that, you know, again, supportive of looking at what the districts are and conservation districts and commercial zones, but hesitant and would probably like to explore more on the residential portion of this, what it would mean for this particular district and what it would mean for other historic districts throughout the city.
Commissioner, we already used that in the downtown, remember, the TDR program only works for the downtown because it's where we have restricted development capacity. So the northwest neighborhood, that is in essence a residential district, already has that ability, and we have properties within the neighborhood that have taken advantage or have, are using, trying to get that benefit. It basically is calculated when they, in the northwest, they already, it's already designated, so that's a little bit different than this one. This, Brelsford Park is not a neighborhood that is already designated as a historic neighborhood. So what we're thinking is probably not identifying the properties as an individual property, so the property owner can approach the city and say, "I want to designate my structure individually and take advantage of selling my TDRs." So that will be kind of an individual, will not be a whole district as it has been done with the northwest neighborhood, where it has done a long time ago as a designation, and it's already identified which properties can transfer the TDRs. In terms of the tracking, the TDR program is very specific how it is tracked, what is the process of approval for the transfer, and then it's a restrictive covenant that is recorded on the public records on the sending side as well as on the receiving side to keep track of the development capacity. So that is handled that way.
Sure. And Mayor, at your discretion, at some point, if we could do a mayor commission work session to really drill down about the details of this program and what it entails, and look closer at how it's working in the northwest and how it would work here, you know, at your discretion, I think it would be a topic worth considering.
Definitely.
Yeah, that's fine. I think we're going to have a conversation about TDRs generally, maybe you could weave that into that particular workshop discussion.
Yeah, perfect.
And then wrapping up, just to provide a quick tentative schedule. So again, we're at the mayor commission meeting today. We're expecting Mr. Grace and his team to submit on March 9th with the zoning and land development changes. We'd like to have a community outreach meeting. We've already had some preliminary discussions as part of the comp plan amendment that you've seen. So sometime within this window, we'll have an outreach. We have to take it to DAC and Planning Board, so we're expecting if we can hit our target. We'll be back before you in July for first reading of the changes. Again, because a comp plan is involved here, we'll have to transmit to the Department of Economic Opportunity for their 40-day review, and then we'll hopefully be back at second reading sometime around October 4th, my daughter's birthday, so I know the target.
Any further questions, comments? Yeah, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, and thank you for this presentation. My question is regarding the Palm Beach Lakes Bridge. I know several months ago, Palm Beach County started a conversation about how to move forward with that bridge and the design, and I believe there were people from the city that were invited to the meeting. I'm just wondering if there have been any next steps? I know that that, the redesign will impact this project.
Yeah, Commissioner, I know we've had some preliminary discussions. I haven't heard of anything recently. I'm looking at Anna, and she hasn't heard either. Certainly, we'll touch base with engineering, I know they have been involved in the review as well, but I have not heard anything recently, so we'll see where they're at.
All right. Commissioners, are we comfortable with the direction which staff has headed on this? See, number heads nodding, okay.
Thank you very much.
Let us proceed. Thank you. I don't have anything on the mayor's matters, does anyone get, I think for the good of the body, Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one topic that I know has been hot on everyone's list, and that's COVID vaccines. Received a lot of questions from residents, et cetera, and I know we, as a governing body, have little influence over what the governor has decided to do through distribution of vaccines through Publix. I was wondering if we could have a conversation between staff on what we might do to provide wraparound services, perhaps a hotline where residents could call in if they're having a hard time working through the technology portion to get an appointment, maybe a partnership with the county. I know they're looking at free Palm Tran rides, if not free, then help to subsidize those, work with Uber, some sort of transport team or something to help get some of our residents to the Publix for their appointment. While not as severe as what we've seen in the news for the western Palm Beach County neighborhoods of a 35-mile trip, we do have neighborhoods within the city of West Palm Beach that are not proximitous to a Publix, and walking and other forms of transportation, especially for our senior population, make it prohibitive. So if we could maybe put together a conversation just to see what our resources are, maybe existing, and something that we could create from some CARES funds, et cetera, I think it'd be worthwhile for our residents.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what, I mean, I guess once we find out where, well, two things. The Publix plan is the Publix plan, but I guess before we could devise a program, we need to figure out who is going to be on the list, because I understand that people have to access the scheduling via the website, which you got to do it online as opposed to call. Now, maybe if we are aware of a, that, if we have a database of people who have reservations, maybe we could put together, and I'm just spitballing here, a transportation alternative so that folks could feel comfortable applying for a appointment, knowing that if they don't have the transportation, there's something that the city can provide. Ms. Johnson, if we could just start discussing what that would look like. I don't know if we could use some of our trolleys to move people from point A to point, is that kind of where you were going?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. And I don't expect for anybody to have the answers sitting here today. I just think we have a collective of a lot of great brain power within leadership and staff that maybe we could sit and start to discuss what some of the gaps are in service, like understanding the Publix plan is the Publix plan, that's what the governor has rolled out, but I think there are ways we can help fill those gaps for even just those who can't operate a computer properly, to be able to make an appointment if they can call you on the phone and we can have someone available to do that. It's just ideas off the top of the head, if we just maybe have a sit-down meeting and say, "What are some things we've been hearing from the community, and how could we use our existing or easily accessible resources to help fill those gaps?" I think that's really what my request is.
Okay, we can have that conversation. I'm not sure that we can have proxies schedule appointments for people on the Publix system, because I think they get pretty specific about the nature of the questions and HIPAA laws, et cetera. But transportation may be an issue. And I'm also hearing rumors, maybe you all have heard it, that the state and the county are moving toward establishing some vaccine pods or points of distribution in some of these lower-income neighborhoods, maybe even as early as this Friday. I think they're trying to set up something at different points. I think Gaines Park has been mentioned as a possibility. So that will take some of the, hopefully, some of the pressure off of just relying upon the Publix program. But we will keep our eyes and ears open for those. I'll work with emergency management Brent Boomfield to see what he may be hearing, because I know he's in communication with the county each and every day. And if we can fill some of those gaps, either from a transportation standpoint as a backup to people- to people, we will work on that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else for the good of body? Commissioner Paduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually just spoke with Chief Bloomfield this morning regarding this very issue, just to get some clarification as to what he understands is going to happen going forward. And he told me that all distribution of the vaccine for the near future will be conducted by Publix only. So hopefully, there is something additional that's going to come out, but, I mean, he was pretty clear that it's going to be through Publix.
Okay. Well, we'll still, maybe if we can work on having a transportation option for people who may not get to, be able to get to a Publix, so folks can know if they do get an appointment, there's a backup. I'll discuss that internally with staff and see what we may have available to help with at least the transportation side of it. Thank you for that information, Commissioner. Anything else? Okay, thank you all very much, and stay safe out there.